Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Austin School Board. And if you wish, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have public comment.
And it would be common tonight.
And you, um, the great take.
Yes ma'am.
The notes when we go into. And we'll follow the format of last year. Yes.
I just had a question about it. In reading the policy that describes it, our process is not really following what is stipulated in the policy. And I'm wondering if there, we need to do something to make a plan, let's say, board evaluation take place, whether we need to revise the policy.
You've asked me.
Yeah, I think that happened last year because, you know, Superintendent Morse was just basically started, wasn't it? There's something we felt that it was too early to do the review in November. I forget how that was.
I wasn't on the board, but the policy reads, "The school board shall evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis utilizing the criteria established under CBIR. A three-person superintendent's evaluation committee shall be appointed and chaired by the school board chairperson. By November 15th, the superintendent shall furnish the committee with a written self-assessment, which addresses the performance areas as outlined in CBR-I-R." And then the committee proceeds to do its work and it gives a date where the committee comes back to the board.
It's our current policy?
It's our current policy and it was in the agenda for today's meeting. The policy was revised and first read November 2009, second read 2009, reviewed by the Policy Committee August 7th, 2013, and no changes were made. So I guess it wasn't brought to the board at that point.
And the R part was 98.
So just in terms of going back to what HLA was just sharing, one of the things that we talked about last year was doing this in February as opposed to November, largely because we'll have gone through a full year of work, the budget process behind us and so forth. And so that was the, that was the procedure we used last year. So I was just duplicating what we did last year to this year. So I would, I would say the policy does need to be amended to reflect current practice.
I think that's a better idea anyway, doing it in February, because it's totally insane to try to do an evaluation in the middle of the budget.
Budget, excuse me. Right. And I'm, I'm not questioning at all the evaluation process. I'm just feeling that as the board, we just should adhere to policy.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the superintendent policy. What is it, that number Kenny?
CBI.
CBI, to follow the same procedure we followed last year in reviewing the superintendent's performance.
And we'll second it. Discussion.
Did we have a self-evaluation last year?
Yep. I had one before the final evaluation was written, so I'd have one for you for next week, excuse me, February 12th.
Further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hand? Seven and the affirmative, motion passes.
I'd like to make a comment following that. I agree Kenny, and that we'll do our best to bring that to the Policy Committee to make sure that it's following the procedures that we're, we've followed for two years now.
But I was going to suggest that as well, that we update the policy so it reflects how we feel the process is best served.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to discuss before we go into?
I have just one question actually, and that's what, because we're going to do the warrant presentations. Are we going to do it like last year where there was a PowerPoint that kind of accompanied it, or is there anything like that? And then will people who are doing their?
We're still on the superintendent's evaluation part? Are we done?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, didn't mean to like.
I have a question. Are we going to go into non-public session, discuss the evaluation?
Yes.
Without self-evaluation of the superintendent? Is that what we're doing?
Yep. And I'll have the self-evaluation to you shortly. You know, I can get it to you beginning of next week if you want, so it can incorporate your thoughts into my evaluation.
I mean, it seems backward to me to do it that way.
Last year, I, I have no recollection. I remember having the meeting. I, you wrote the report.
No.
Do you remember the procedure we followed last year?
Not great specificity, but I thought we had an evalu-, I thought we had a self-evaluation early in the process.
Are we having a manifest meeting on the 29th?
No.
I can, I mean, if it helps Tom, I can have it too tomorrow. I mean, it's largely gone. I just didn't finish it for tonight.
Megan. I mean, we're here, we should have this meeting. You know, I've done a lot of evaluations of my career and I've seen them done both ways. There's pros and cons. You know, if you get the employees' self-evaluation first, sometimes that can color and you're more reactionary. So you might get some insights by not having that. I could see how it could be a pro, a good thing. I agree. I mean, it's, it's really not, I don't think it's a showstopper from having our, our discussion this evening. I would also say that it would make sense in my mind that we, we deal with the warrant articles before we go into non-public.
That's what I was trying to say. I mean, I, I agree with Megan too. I think that we're going to get your evaluation anyway. We have to have another one of these anyway. We're going to have to meld everything together and it's probably not a bad idea for us to get our kind of thoughts together.
And the other thing I would add, and it really did get by me, was when Kenny had suggested combining these meetings tonight, I really wasn't thinking my evaluation was going to happen. The conversation you were going to have was going to happen tonight. And then when Kenny suggested that to me and I suggested it to Maria, everybody thought it was a great idea. So, you know, I didn't connect the dots.
I'm fine.
I think Al wanted to speak.
Oh, I, I just, I mean, I didn't mean to derail the superintendent thing. I was just coming back to that. I just wanted to make sure that anybody, you know, I mean, it's, you know, as we did it last year, feeling comfortable up there is probably the best thing because it's a little weird standing up in there. And I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody had an opportunity to look through that presentation and make sure they were in a comfort zone before they got up there.
Right. And largely the Communication Committee reviewed and, and we put it together, Sue and I, and the Communications Committee came in and they said, you know, this might work better here, or, you know, we need better explanation there. And so when we built it, we built it with the Communications Committee's critique, since this is one that you guys do opposed to me. So we can continue to do that.
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, because we're not going to meet again before we do the deliberative sessions. I just wanted to make sure that everybody got it out and could look at it and felt comfortable.
And, you know, largely it's, it mimics the presentations that I've been doing in the public arena, through the public hearing, through the meetings with the towns. So it's really customizing it to meet the board members' needs, who's going to be speaking. So again, it's not a large body of work for Sue and I to put that together for the Communications Committee to critique Al, so we can have it together probably by the beginning of next week. So I'll have Wendy call and just schedule a meeting with you and the Communications Committee and you can review it and give your thoughts.
Sure.
My first Communications Committee meeting.
And everybody's comfortable.
I'm mostly worried about Ed because he has some really hard ones this year.
Thank you. Only big, only big power.
Teleporter.
And Megan and I are all.
We'll just be providing moral support in the background.
So I, I also think we should deal with the warrant articles before we do the non-public. And I'm curious if you may be running through with us the changes that necessitated coming together again, that may be helpful.
Absolutely. I have my hired copies in front of me, so I'm going to scoot over here.
Do you want one? Sue, may I have one?
I can do it easy for you.
I think it was near the pack.
No.
So as, you know, as we warm up on the warrant articles, you know, you took a vote.
Thank you, Al.
You took a vote at the last meeting and you can do either revote on each article. I know that Kenny will recuse himself like he did previously related to the warrant article that deals with teachers' contract. So, you know, for this purpose tonight, it may be just as easy to just go through them and take a motion in a second and, and do it that way. Because it's not a very long process tonight. You've gone through these warrant articles 100 times by now. We did make modifications to the two warrant articles that raised questions at our last meeting. We did that with lawyer guidance. Sue spent a lot of time with our lawyers rewording these so that the intent and purpose didn't change. She also spent time with the Department of Revenue in Hampshire to make sure the wording was correct. And so what if we just go through them, starting with Article 3. No changes here. This is the negotiated agreement with the teacher's contract. It appears on the warrants as, as presented here. And so I don't think you probably have, I'll anticipate you don't have any questions related to Article 3. And if not, then it's appropriate to go forward and motion in a second and move it.
Tom?
I move we accept Article 3.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Al. Discussion?
And just, I will recuse myself from that vote.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a show of hand? Hands, six in the affirmative. And Kenny recusing himself.
So Article 4 is the, is the article that we had discussion, pretty lengthy discussion about last meeting. We were trying to respond to public hearing comment actually made by one of the citizens that she thought that the, she asked the question whether Article 4 and 5 were connected and they, they are in the sense that we need them both to complete the project. I took it upon myself to raise the number based on that question and then appropriately was challenged that, that changed the intent and purpose. And so this is the one that Sue spent a lot of time with our attorneys on. And you may recall that the language was, would not exceed $500,000. And that was, you know, the very appropriate question that a citizen asked us at public hearing, which was not the intent. So we changed exceed to estimated at, again, working very closely with our attorneys. Does that change the intent? Did that change the purpose? Clearly the intent was to utilize this $500,000. And so based on our conversation with our attorneys, this wording is the wording that we should have for our citizens to vote on on March 11th. So I recommend this Article 3 as written.
Al?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Article 4.
Moved by Al, seconded by Ed. Discussion? Megan?
Um, wasn't the explanation, didn't someone want to move the explanation another, after Article 5 or something?
Well, we talked about that, but I think at the end, we decided that it was probably more appropriate to put it here.
Okay.
Because we're not adding the $100,000 to that, so it just makes more sense to.
Okay.
And I did make a few changes to that based on recommendations from the attorney.
Okay.
But that's, you know.
Yeah, because it doesn't cite that dollar amount.
Right, right.
Anymore. Okay. Well, okay, we're not on Article 5, but.
Not yet. We'll get there.
All right.
I was going to say, I think the explanation is a lot clearer now.
Yeah.
Understand, I can understand it just reading it quickly through, which is great. And, but again, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, I think Article 5 will pass. It's just a matter of making sure the public knows that the, that the actual estimated cost is more than $500,000 even, right? So that isn't clear from this that we're going to probably be using this money right away to, to build that extra space. That's my own concern.
I think a lot of that's actually going to be on Ann's shoulders when she does the.
And they're broad.
I mean, the explanation part of it will come at the deliberative session where after she's made it, she can do a better job. I mean, I don't think we can, there's no way we're going to end up being able to wordsmith it enough on the warrant itself to do it as, you know, good an explanation she'll do at the deliberative.
Except only a small proportion of the voters.
That's what I was, my fear, I agree, and we'll be able to present at deliberative, but the real important part is the voting in March. And so I have, you know, we really would lose this project if we don't get 4 and 5 approved. And I still feel that some way we should have some sort of link. And just quickly thinking of how to do the link, in the sentence, "The cost of the addition is estimated at $500,000." Would we qualify that, but perhaps may slightly exceed that?
I wouldn't change the warrant language at this point because we've spent so much time with the attorneys investing in it. I would put it in the explanation.
So then what I, then I think what we need to really put that in the explanation. And I think then we do need an explanation under 5 stating that.
That's exactly where I was going to go.
That's what I was going to say too.
I mean, the 5, you could say funds from this would be, you know, the, while, you know, these funds would be used to ensure that we could complete the cafeteria.
If it exceeds our estimate.
In the explanation, we also want to articulate what the balance is in that.
Right. That's, I just think that's real, real important to do because.
Further discussion?
Are you going to come up with that language then?
Well, the only thing is.
The explanation language we can, we can add, under 5.
But we can't because you're going to sign that now. You have the, the copy to sign now in your folder, so we can post on Friday.
No, I'm, just keep talking, you know? The explanation we can write right now, am I wrong?
But it won't be typed on there for the official posted copy. And, and again, explanations are your choice. They're not necessarily on all articles. It would, the only way it would get to the polls and on the ballot would be if you had a signed copy that you posted with it on there. So my point is that you have the copies to sign, so it would mean you'd need to come to the office to sign them again.
It looks so much more homie with it handwritten instead of like typed.
Is that what you were suggesting, that you would handwrite it? Well, I mean, I suppose.
No. I mean, they can come by, if they approve it, we can do the explanation, they can sign it at the, at the office, as long as we have, you know, we have those. When do we have to have this done?
We have to have it posted Friday. Well, Monday, but we don't like to wait till Monday in case weather permits us.
So if we add the explanation tomorrow, first thing, you all be able to stop by and sign the warrants?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
It's legal. Just the explanation.
What time during the day?
We would have it done first thing in the morning, you know, within an hour of opening.
But I mean, when would it have to be, when will be the deadline when it'd have to be signed?
Alternatively, we can make no explanation, approve the thing as it is, sign it, and then do the explanation at deliberative session.
But Kenny's point is that it's, the language has been lost.
Could we sign it late in the day on Thursday? I can't, I get in the morning.
Friday morning, could be your Friday morning.
May I ask a question about this? Does the explanation have to be on the warrant? Could we have like a little slip of paper that says explanation for warrant article 5? Is that?
Well, you could add the explanation at your deliberative session.
I mean, I'm just saying that maybe that, you know, does it have to be like, oh, here's a little slip of paper in case.
So.
It's what you see when you go to vote.
Vote.
And so I think that it's clean to have it all written.
Right. So Kenny's concerns are covered, Sue, if we can make these changes at deliberative. We can do the explanation, we could say, make the change and so that we can sign this tonight.
Right.
And we can make the change at deliberative to add that explanation, which would then be available at, on, which will then be printed on the ballots. So that's the concern that Kenny has.
Right.
It's not printed on the ballot. So we can sign this tonight, which I think.
But if it is everybody, we could, and essence, get it done by Friday, right? You're not going to post until Friday.
I'm uncomfortable with us all dropping in at the SAU and signing documents.
Yeah, me too.
I think we should sign it and Kenny's concerns, I think all of our concerns can be, can be, can be answered by, we can come up with the language tonight and agree on it and sign the document tonight and then add it at deliberative. And that's legal and there's no.
Could I propose if we just had a single sentence, something like, "These funds may be needed to finance the addition to the Mohermet Cafeteria of costs exceed $500,000"?
This is what I wrote. So I was writing while you were, you guys were talking. The balance of this account is, and it's $98,000 and some odd dollars. So we'll have that in there. This account will be used in conjunction with Article 4 to ensure funds are available to complete the Mohermet Cafeteria project or to use on other capital projects if not necessary for the, for the cafeteria.
Better.
Okay, you have that for me.
So what is the process of the deliberative session?
Who's, who's doing that article?
Anne.
I am.
So I would assume that you would, would add that at that time.
But does that require a vote from the whole session, from the whole deliberative session?
Yeah.
Explanations. Yeah, make an amendment to the article. That's what you would do. And add this explanation.
And then have it seconded and then voted on.
And in actuality, that gives us the opportunity to highlight the importance of it.
Right.
So it's, it's not a bad thing.
No.
True.
How could you vote against an explanation?
Right. Well, someone who didn't want it to pass would vote against it.
Right.
Okay. We're back to Article 4.
Voting on 4.
We're voting on.
That's seven in the affirmative?
Seven in the affirmative. No, we're on the 5.
So we were just talking about this article. Article 5 is the capital account, reserve account that currently exists. And we're asking the voters to release that to the board's discretion to use against the Mohermet project or other capital improvement accounts. The wording on this is different, but then the conversation we had again with our attorneys was although the wording is different, the intent and purpose is the same. And so, I mean, the board, the voters would release the funds, who they're going to release them to? They're going to release them to the board. So that makes more sense. I will tell you that this particular article, we went back and forth with the attorneys over a three-week period. And finally, when we called them and said, you know, there's an issue here around intent and purpose that we want to make sure is clear, then they came back with this language, which we think they should have come up with three weeks ago when we first approached it. But, so the intent and purpose is the same, it's the release of the funds. Question is, you know, would we, would we drain this count to zero? Would we leave $100 in it? Is there a rationale for not draining it and keeping it because it's already approved capital reserve account at some point? Boyd could ask the voters to put money back into it. So, you know, I think that is an option once it's released to the board to say, well, this is already approved by the board, so let's keep the account, let's use this money right now. And in the future, some board may say, we have that account, let's put some more money in it.
Kenny?
I move to accept Article 5 as written.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion?
And just to reiterate, I think that explanation is really going to be the key to Article 5. I think that's going to give the understanding to the voting public that they should have.
Ed?
I think that's even more important now because the amount's not in there, so it's nice to, so when people are looking at it, they know what, how much money they're dealing with on account like this, too.
So I was writing while you were talking about process. So that explanation that I just wrote that I read, how will that be incorporated into the deliberative session?
So the way the deliberative session works is you each get your article, you go up and you read your article. Someone will move second and then you vote. Then you would say, I move to amend.
Somebody from the board?
Yes, the board.
What does the public?
Then you have discussion.
But they can move to add and subtract.
Exactly, yeah.
So they could move to.
Amend. They could amend. They could amend any of your articles.
And they could vote on the explanation too.
They could?
Big coffee.
Further discussion? Can we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Article 6.
So Article 6 is the Barrington agreement with the district. And you appeared comfortable with this language the last time, so there is no changes here from our last meeting.
Kenny?
I move to accept Article 6 as written.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion, Ken?
Maybe this is splitting hairs, but in the explanation, and I will be the one to do this particular article, my understanding is that the Barrington is going to start with a minimum, and let's say they have 70 kids now. The minimum will be, I think, 70 or 10% plus 70. And it will then grow incrementally to 125 and then perhaps continue to grow incrementally to 200.
So I think in terms of that evening, Kenny, we should, I should make copies of the agreement, you know, for the public so they can see it. And then, you know, we'll be careful to articulate in the PowerPoint, the process by which the students grow.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Because it may not grow to 200. It may, it may stay at 125.
But it's guaranteed.
And it's not going to be 125 right off the bat. It's going to take.
Five years and 20%.
Exactly. So I just think to communicate where we are and how it's interesting.
We've got to be careful too, I mean, it may not be five years at 20% because they may be able to get to 100 faster than, you know. So I think it's, it's, the explanation is a gradual growth and it could vary. You know, it might be 10 students one year, 20 students the next year, five stu-, you know, it'll depend on, on the interest of Barrington students. So we'll, we'll make sure we're crafting that slide very carefully.
Is the 125 the number that's being used for them guaranteeing us 95%?
Yeah.
But not from day one.
When they, when they reach, it takes five years to reach the 125. 125 becomes the point at which Boyster River agrees to be a school of record along with Dover. So that's the magic of the number 125.
So that's what's not clear, that it sound, the explanation here, it appears the 125 is immediate.
Right. Right.
And that's a little confusing if in fact it's not potentially for five years.
Right. Or it could, as I said, when Al said it, it could be three years. I mean, they could get to 125, you know, relatively quickly if the student interest is there. We built a five-year ladder or scaffold to get there, but they might get there in three, they might get there in six. But 125 is the place where we become a school of record.
And just, am I wrong thinking that the guaranteed payment from Barrington, each year incrementally goes up by 10%? Whether or not they have the students there, no, it's only when we reach that 125.
The thresholds are all articulated in the, in the contract and they have certain criteria, a number of students to reach.
Right.
So if they don't reach it in a given year, they still have to pay the district 95% of, as if they did.
That's what I was, yeah, that's exactly what I said, right.
Thanks, Kenny.
Yeah.
Didn't mean to talk past you. You had it.
It's okay.
One of the things about, there was an editorial or community comment in the paper about someone from Barrington describing this and she was saying that she was looking at that guaranteed price as a good thing from the Barrington perspective because, you know, it guarantees that there's going to be teachers there and programs to meet the needs of the, so I think that just was a nice flip side. It isn't just like, oh boy, Boister River's going to come out financially ahead because we got this guaranteed money in our pot. It's really all about educating the students and making sure that the, it says here, you know, to maintain programs, but that really, that's really what the guarantee's all about is keeping the program solid.
I didn't see that editorial, thanks for sharing it.
Further discussion? Good for you, have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Could I just ask a question about six that doesn't pertain to our approving it? I think it's really crucial that our voters approve this and equally important that Barrington voters approve it. Is there something as a school district that we can do to promote this in the Barrington community? Do you see, because I think it's a win for them, a win for us, and is there any way to sell that?
We know that we have their school board support and their superintendent's support. We have to be careful as an elected school board and representing positions that the board has taken. But we have to be careful not to politicize issues and, and spend taxpayer money to advocate certain outcomes. So we don't really have a role in Barrington unless the superintendent and school board invite us in to do a public meeting, which I'd be more than willing to do and I can suggest to Gail if that's something she's interested in. She's had her own public hearings and feedback from her to date is pretty positive. So, I mean, it's not any indication that it's going to pass any more than when I do public hearings, I get a strong sense that people are supportive. You know, the Madbury select people were supportive, the Lee select people appeared supportive. I have, in both of those, there were, you know, two dozen citizens present in each meeting. No one has spoken out against entering into an agreement with Barrington. So I think our job as elected officials and appointed officials is to answer people's questions and let them know, you know, that we do support it. But it doesn't preclude other organizations outside the school from taking positions and advocating, you know, for our articles. It's just, we have, we have a fine line as an elected body in terms of advocacy.
Would you see it crossing that line if yourself and the superintendent of Barrington jointly wrote a letter to the editor of Foster's?
Oh, no, no, that wouldn't cross the line at all. I mean, our school boards have approved it, so therefore us telling the world that this is a good thing is a reflection on the elected bodies we work for.
So that, that might be a good idea and then I bet Todd would pick it up for Friday updates. I don't know if Barrington has a similar community-wide publication.
I will, I'll suggest that to Gail, Koshner, the superintendent in Barrington. It's a great idea.
Article Seven?
So Article Seven is our summative article and although we'd love to change its structure, it is dictated by law and so the structure pretty much is, is the way it is. I think that whoever's, who's doing Article Seven, Al, I think that Tom raised the issue, and I did it, by the way, Tom, last night in Lee and at, at Madbury, the issue that the default budget is not built on all four accounts, but built only on the operating budget. And the select people, of course, are used to seeing numbers and, and so forth. They understood that completely, we didn't get any question on it. Trying to dispel the illusion that if the budget failed, it would go down by a million and a half dollars. It would only go down by the five, what is it, Sue, 500?
660.
660, 665, is that it? Yeah.
I can remember what the new number is.
Yeah, yeah, the default budget.
Yeah.
Which, you know, we did, I did a lot better job on that last night.
Yeah, no, it was really, I mean, he clearly did it where he said, you know, what you're really looking at is Fontan and if you do the default, really, it's just moving down.
And I'll make sure, I'm in Durham, counsel next week doing the presentation there. That, that has the advantage of being on camera. I'll repeat that part of it so that it is pretty clear that the Fund 21, 22, and 23 are not part of the default budget.
What happens to those funds? If the budget doesn't?
They stay the same.
They just carry over?
They just stay the same because they're pass-through funds, so they could go up or down anyways because federal grants is just an estimate. So it's just giving the authority to spend.
Again, it adds to the confusion of that budget because if it did go to default, people say, oh, well, what happens to those? Nothing. There is a information-only kind of piece for the public to understand that there is more in the budget than just the money raised through taxes. That we have federal funds and grant funds and so forth.
Just a question, I should note this. The 3,000, three, an Article Three, that 319,000, is that included in the?
No.
No? So then if we pass Article Three, does that money get added to the final?
Yes.
Yes. Remember, remember how I separated it in the slide? There was the operating budget increase, which is, I believe, 340, and then the teachers' increase, which was 319, are separated out because that's the way they present it to the voters.
So when Al presents it, if Article Three passes, which he assumes it will, there'll be another figure. Would he amend?
No.
This? Okay.
It's a standalone warrant, Al.
So let's say Article Three passes and Article Seven doesn't.
So you would still add it, but you'd add it to the default.
Sue has spoken. So shall it be?
So the difference will probably end up being more like eight, eight or 900,000.
Right.
Is right?
Do we have a motion? Kenny?
I move to accept Article Seven as written.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. Discussion?
Getting ready to vote.
Kenny?
I just, again, probably we're restricted with wording and, and, you know, just that concern of comparing the default and the term that you used, operating budget, with Fund 10. Is the word regular needed?
Every word in that article is technical. That's the way the Department of Regulation, Sue, is that the right department? Department of Regulation.
Revenue Administration.
Insists that it be written.
Exactly. You couldn't take regular out or stick regular before the second.
I wouldn't take a comma or a period or.
Are we prohibited from making a motion at the deliberative to add an explanation at the end of Article Seven that explains some of these things that aren't clear? Could Al?
I'm not sure it's necessary to add an amendment to it as much as is.
Not an amendment, but an explanation.
Yeah, I mean, but you don't have to add an explanation, you'll be giving an explanation as you're presenting the warrant article.
But that's the same issue. That's very small.
The other one's a more complex issue. This one voters have seen, it's a regular, occurring thing each year. So who, who's doing the summative one? Who's doing Article?
Probably me, I mean, if you really want to, we could add something, but.
I'm just worried.
I think the state statute is very specific, I looked at it and I don't think we should change anything. I don't think we should add an explanation. Quite frankly, this is an area that is confusing to people, so I just think we do the best we can to explain it during the deliberative. You know, I fully didn't understand it till I was on the school board and I asked Sue and she explained it to me because it, it is confusing. And I don't know, I just want to make sure we're doing things legally and we just have to do the best to explain it. And if people still don't get it, they can call one of us.
So one time I get, one time I get the critique, you were doing a public presentation.
I think actually what Jim has done, I mean, the whole work that's gone into this is the bigger issue because it's like when you look at 39 million, it's a lot of money. But the real work is explaining like, well, look, percentage-wise, it's less than 2%.
1.7%.
So that is, I mean, it's pretty clear after sitting at the Lee Selectman and at the ABC, a majority of people get, that's what they get. It's the percentage, it's, you know, going up, so I think they're pretty happy with it, so.
Is the 1.7 included, the 319?
It does.
It does.
Yeah. I think the budget was at .09 and the teachers added .08.
Further discussion? Could we have a show of hands, please? Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
We're good.
So we're signing these tonight.
Yes.
And what are the others for left to sign?
Are we ready here? There are three documents to sign, yeah. I just, all together.
I sign first? Trust me.
Isn't your name printed?
It is on the warrant, but it's not on the other.
Well, here, let's put, start at one end.
Kenny, you want to grab a folder from your side and work it this way?
Do they have to be in the same order?
If you.
Your name is on it, so you're going to sign.
It is, is it, is your name on all of them or just on the warrant one?
Do we need to date this?
Uh, just on the warrant one.
Yeah, it's just on the warrant one.
Will you date it?
Yeah.
So question, Sue, is the, do the signatures have to be in the same order? They do not.
No, but you said that's true in Maine, right?
It is true, no.
So I'm just start signing here?
You can sign it and pass it, pass it on.
So we add up everything, it's going to be a lot more than 39.
Yes.
We add what?
I'll date 122.
If you add everything past, it's going to be a lot more than 39. Saying.
Except I just have a question, does that say date posted or when signed?
Posted.
Okay, so you don't want to put that on there.
So there's four documents?
So don't fill that in.
Four, it's four in each one.
I'll keep that copy.
You fill white out.
I'll keep that copy. They're all different. Are there any, no, no, I don't need that required.
Has a place for your name.
Until Ed's a doctor by his signature.
I can sign so fast.
Is this support?
Why don't you give it to Ken? Some more, Ken.
Where come that one?
They're coming this way, so why don't you give that to Ken and then he can pass that one through to Al.
Do you need, you want to drop it off?
This one doesn't, only has six lines.
That's okay, sign on the bottom.
How about you sign it?
Why?
I don't know, you're more.
You can sign on the bottom.
Make a line. Oh, make a line.
Next year, all these forms are going to be very different.
They are?
Yes.
What changes next year?
Everything's going to be done electronically.
So how does the board sign when it's electronic?
Um, I don't know if I got a clear answer on that. I know we talked about it, but I think it's still going to be, and what's going to happen is your name will actually be printed on there, on all of them. They're just rolling all of that out, which is long overdue. So what will happen is we'll submit.
One done.
For approval. So they'll see it along, long before, 20 days after the board meeting. Because there are some situations where these things get done, passed, voted, and they're not valid.
Hey.
That'll help.
That hasn't happened yet.
Sue, here's this sap.
So that's a sap, oh.
Why don't you just make sure?
Kenny? You missed one.
Did I? Oh, my gosh.
See?
I caught you. I thought you didn't catch that.
No.
It looks like an assembly line.
Sorry, I got, rather throwing it's in.
I missed one?
Yeah. Maybe you missed all of them.
You wrote too fast.
Oh, maybe I haven't done that one yet. Oh, that's the one, yeah, Megan did, and I don't, well, I don't know. If I missed them all, then I'll.
Then we know.
Then we know.
So everything crashes because you didn't sign.
Oh, no.
Deliberative session canceled.
We have to start.
Here's a folder and here's one more.
I think we have physicians here in case I get carpentated.
You guys will have to do the guild negotiations all over again.
So Sue, these are called?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Is it warrant and budget and what?
When I'm off this board, do I get to keep my little?
Oh, I didn't.
My daughters want to know.
What?
My little name.
Oh, your name plaque, oh, that's nice.
I still have my name plaque from my office in Beijing.
Just not the regular book, just the, just the warrants, including the regular budget.
Right, the warrant and the default.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's confusing, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
I talk about a warrant, what do you mean?
Those are signed?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's signed.
I might quit calculation, but of course I missed one, so don't trust me.
There you go, Sue.
Is there another one?
Here.
I think both towns had about a dozen people.
Oh, that's good.
I think that's more than last year. Yes.
When's he going to Durham?
I don't know.
Public comment?
Jim, when are you going to Durham?
Public comment?
Durham. Do I have everything?
I think it's Monday.
Monday?
Monday at seven.
Are you going to go to that one, Ken? Yeah. Thank you.
David Taylor from Durham, I wanted to comment on the timing in policy CBI. If I remember correctly, the reason it was in December, November and December is so if you have a bad evaluation and you need to replace the superintendent, that's typically the time period when you need to start looking for a new superintendent. If you wait until the spring, start looking for a superintendent, you basically are out a year and you don't have the cycle, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
There you go.
Closing actions, next meeting, 212, 14. And 3, 5, 14.
I think we are going to do a manifest before the, am I correct, Sue? You wanted us to do a manifest on the fifth?
Yes.
Right. So.
Yes.
So we make sure that that's posted and.
So just, just a manifest?
It's before.
And then deliberative.
Oh, with before deliberative, oh, right, so at the, here at the auditorium then.
You can do it right at the auditorium.
Deliberate will start at seven and we'll do the manifest at 6:30.
It must be post-meeting. Because deliberative is its own creature.
That's why I brought that up, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I move that we go into non-public session under New Hampshire state law RSA 91- A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, A, talking about dismissal, promotion, compensation of a public employee, which I think includes evaluation.
Kenny, again, that was RSA 91- A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, A.
Yep.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Al. And on the roll, call.
Kenny Roetner, yes.
Al Holland, aye.
Dan Lane, aye.
I'm Newkirk, aye.
Maria Bart, aye.
It's her light, aye.
Megan Turnbull, aye.
And so the public knows I'll do what Kenny has done and recuse myself from this part of the meeting.